Our executive session, now we'll go to our 5:15 regular meeting. And let's do the pledge allegiance, Councilmember Huffaker, will you lead us, please?
I'd be honored. Please stand and remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Huffaker. Um, now we'll go on to roll call. And I'm-
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Harold from tonight's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osteen and second by Councilmember Atkinson to excuse Councilmember Harold. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll go to citizen comments. Uh, it's appeared to provide the opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda. Comments on the public hearing, and we do have one item on the public hearing. If there's anyone present, uh, to address the council, come on up, and we'll limit it to three minutes. Seeing no public comment at this time. Okay. Uh, we'll go to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and vouchers. Also, a motion for, uh, resolution number 2024-34, appointing Alicia McRae to the Planning Commission as a voting member for a four-year term. Resolution number 2024-35, appointing Jeff Aiken and reappointing Blythe Kelly and Heather Ossenson to the Historic Preservation Board as voting members for three years. And resolution number 2024-36, reappointing James Snyder and Luis Gonzalez to the Code Enforcement Board as voting members for two-year terms.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osteen, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve the agenda and vouchers, um, including resolution number 24-34, appointing Alicia McRae to the Planning Commission as a voting member for a four-year term. Also, resolution number 24, 2024-35, 35, appointing Jeff Aiken and reappointing Blythe Kelly and Heather Ossenson to the Historic Preservation Board as voting members for three years. And resolution number 2024-36, reappointing James Snyder and Luis, Luis Gonzalez to the Code Enforcement Board as voting members for two-year terms. Any discussion or comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Hey, we got some people. Boy, was that quick for you guys. We have a presentation. Councilmember Hornby, will you read that into the record, please?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Proclamation Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2024. Whereas the city of Wenatchee, Washington celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995. A small business and, and small businesses employ 45.9% of employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the U.S. stays in local communities, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas, 59% of the U.S. consumers are aware of Small Business Saturday, shopping or eat at a small business independently owned retailers or restaurants and on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And whereas, Wenatchee supports our local small businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And whereas, agav- advocacy groups, uh, at, whereas, advocacy groups, uh, as well as public and private organizations across our county have endorsed the Small Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday. And encourage, urge our residents to, and, and our community across the county to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturdays, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. In witness, therefore, I have caused the Seal of the City of Wenatchee to get fixed on this 14th day of November 2024, Mike Poyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, there's not a lot of people in the audience, but here's the deal. We do post it and put it on our social media, and we do get a lot of hits. So, remember that when you're speaking, because you're still gonna be on a camera for videoing. So, thank you, and, uh, and I, and I know in last year, I bought a couple of shoes, and I got one back ordered, so I just wanna bring that up, uh, to you, Josh.
Size 14 is not enough.
So, anyway.
Thirteen?
Obviously, I think everybody knows, I definitely shop downtown. So, anyway, thank you guys so much, and, and I love hearing 68 cents comes back to our, you know, it all comes back to our community. So, thank you for everything you guys do. We do wanna pass out the word and make it a big, uh, not just that day, but every day, so people know about the small, small businesses that support our community downtown.
For sure.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Poyer, and thank you, council members, for this proclamation. It really means a lot to the downtown community, especially you guys doing this every year for us. And also, it just means a lot to the, for us, that the community supports all the local small businesses downtown, especially as we head into the holiday season. Um, we really couldn't do what we do downtown without all of your support, so the partnership that we have, we're just really, really grateful for that. Also, just special shout out to Josh, who's here, I think he has a few words, too.
Sure.
Well, we all know that small business is more than just small business. It's a culture, it's a culture of sacrifice, triumph, uh, of kind of the personification of the American dream. That's small business, that's what we're all about, and we're here to support that. And like Rosa said, you guys have worked so hard in these, in this last year, especially with all the challenges that you've had. New mayor, number one, I mean, what a challenge that's gonna be. But a new mayor, who's had, who's inherited some issues that have been big issues for our community. Thank you, guys, each and every one of you, Laura, the entire staff, for making downtown Wenatchee and, uh, small business work, uh, and keeping it a safe, clean place for all of us. So, thank you, guys, all so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We're gonna give a quick, thanks. You, you guys didn't mention, what's the date? I'm sorry for, I, I'm sorry, Carrie. What's the date? It's the last day of, the 30th?
Thirty.
Okay.
It's a Small Business Saturday, it would be, yes, the 30th.
And you guys got, have some events down there happening that day, or?
Yeah, we partner with the Missy's Cascades. Those girls, they come down and do a lot of marketing promotion for us and support the small businesses, but yeah, we have a lot of businesses doing special deals and stuff.
All right, well, send me some of your social postings that you guys are doing downtown, so we can repost, please.
One thing I forgot to mention is, we did just a straw poll count. We've got 13-plus brand-new small businesses in downtown Wenatchee, just in the last calendar year, and that's, that's something to really be proud of.
Heck, yeah. Wow, yeah, incredible. Uh, my brain sometimes goes back and forth. Thank you, Carrie, for being patient.
Absolutely. Oh, good evening, Mayor Poyer, council members. Uh, Carrie Page, Director of Human Resources, and I am here to present the 2025 Management and Administrative Group classifications and Compensation. The action that I am requesting is for a motion to adopt and authorize the mayor to sign ordinance number 2024-29, repealing ordinance number 2024-16. Again, this ordinance establishes positions for regular status employment with the city of Wenatchee and the administrative group, uh, management and administrative group fixing compensation to be paid for the calendar, calendar year 2025. As you all are aware, compensation is included in with the budget that's to be presented tonight.
And, and this was already presented to Finance Committee?
Yes, I did bring it to the Finance Committee.
Some questions for Carrie?
I have one question. Uh, the packet that we have online is different than the printed. This one says we're repealing 2024-16, and this one says we're repealing 2023-20.
So, 2024-16 is the most recent ordinance that was passed due to the addition of the Homeless Response Administrator, so that is the most current ordinance to override.
That should be the correct one.
Yes.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt, uh, ordinance number 2024-29, establishing positions for regular status employment within the City of Wenatchee Management and Administrative Group, fixing the compensation to be paid for the 2025 calendar year, and repealing ordinance number 2024-16.
Second.
Been a motion by Councilmember Huffaker and second by Councilmember Hornby, uh, for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-29, establishing positions for regular status employment within the City of Wenatchee Management, Administrative Group, fixing the compensation to be paid for the 2025 calendar year, and repealing ordinance number 2024-16. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh, you get to stay here.
I get to stay, I got one more. So, uh, before you is the next request for a motion to adopt and authorize the mayor to sign ordinance number 2024-30, and repeal ordinance 2023-24. This establishes pay ranges for temporary employees, as well as the positions that we hire throughout the 2025 season. It also reflects the January 1, 2025 minimum wage increase. And again, sorry, compensation is incorporated into the budget to be presented.
Again, this was, uh, went to Finance.
Yes.
And I know some of those wages, we need to get competitive for our temporary workers.
Correct.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-30, establishing pay ranges for temporary workers for the 2025 calendar year, and repealing ordinance number 2023-24.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson, second by Councilmember Euer, for the City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-30, establishing pay ranges for temporary workers for the 2025 calendar year, and repealing ordinance number 2023-24. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Carrie, for doing the work and doing the research to come up with the numbers. I know that's not necessarily, uh, it's, it's kinda complicated. I kinda got-
A little bit, yeah.
I know in your department, a little bit, trying to figure out, how do you, how do you come up with these, you know, for equal?
For fair.
For fairness.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Don't forget Rosa. Uh, hi, Darcy.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor. Good af, good afternoon or evening, council. I'm here tonight, and I brought with me, I'm Darcy Ronnie, Utility Planner for the City of Wenatchee, and I brought with me Jeremy Hoover, our Senior Engineer for the City of Wenatchee. Um, and we're here to talk to you about, uh, motion for the City Council to approve a staff application to the Department of Health for a drinking water state revolving loan. This is a project, uh, we call Crawford Main Replacement Project. The application that we would like to submit would be for a portion of the project. We previously got a loan through the Department of Health for the planning efforts up to 90% to replace the Crawford Main Extension. At this time, staff is recommending that we go forward with a portion of the project next year, what we're calling the Canal Crossing, which is on Crawford between Fuller and Ormason. We feel it's the most critical component, and we would like to proceed with a loan application to the Department of Health in the amount of 851,000, maybe the exact dollar, 851,147.30, which includes a 15% contingency. Uh, it has a loan origination fee of 8,427. The standard loan rate would be a 1% origination fee, and then 2.25% following that for 20-year terms. At this time, we're asking for permission to apply. That is one thing that the Department of Health asks of us, that we come to the council. If we were to get this approval and we apply, I would come back here again with that agreement with the actual terms and present that back to you for another consideration. They will weigh in on that and believe that they'll get back to anyone who applies between the end of January and early February with an answer. And then if we were to go forward with that, we would be able to finish up the planning efforts and get together a bid package to do that portion of construction on Crawford, which is under the Irrigation Canal. I welcome any questions you have about the project. That's quite a bit I've thrown at you.
And this was brought to Public Works today?
Yes.
Yep.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the staff application to the Department of Health for a drinking water state revolving fund loan for the city project number 2202, Crawford Main Replacement Project, and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Cuevas, for City Council to approve the staff, staff application to the Department of Health for a drinking water state revolving fund loan for the city's project number 2022-2202, Crawford Main Replacement Project, and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement. Any other comments or discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
City Administrator, you're up.
Oh, no, they made this so tall.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Laura Gloria, City Administrator. The item before you is the 2025 Agreement for Emergency Services between the City of Wenatchee and Shalane County Department of Emergency Management. Um, the city's been contracting with Shalane County Emergency Management since 2016. We bring this, uh, agreement to you on an annual basis for consideration. Um, this year, the, uh, cost was a little bit higher than anticipated. It was a 20% increase, um, specifically due to a contractual staff increase, and then they allocated the motor pool, uh, for vehicles that are used as part of this program out of the Sheriff's Office budget into the emergency services component. So, there is a 20% increase, looking at, um, giving our total for 2025 at roughly at 100, 100, 133,4,790. Um, they do that on a per capita basis, so that is spread out between Shalane County, Cashmere, Shalane, Annieette, Leavenworth, and Wenatchee. We are the largest of them all, so we do get, um, a hefty component of it, but, um, other than that, the contract itself in terms of services is the same contract we've had on a yearly basis. It really is just the change to the cost. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the contract between Shalane County Department of Emergency Management and the City of Wenatchee for the 2025 Emergency Services in the amount of 134,790, and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Huffaker and second by Councilmember Hornby, for City Council to approve the contract between Shalane County Department of Emergency Management and the City of Wenatchee for 2025 Emergency Services in the amount of 134,790, and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Brad Hosenjack, Finance Director, I've got the next, uh, two items on here. Um, this first item is, uh, an ordinance to update the city list of funds in our city code. Uh, this, this first one is actually a pretty boring, uh, item. Um, all my items I bring are typically pretty boring. Um, but, uh, so, it's, it's helpful for accounting purposes, budgeting purposes, audit purposes, for us to maintain a list of all our different, uh, accounting funds, and so I like to try to keep those up to date. Um, there's one fund that is, uh, no longer needed, and that is the, uh, AR, the ARP Recovery Fund. These, that was for our, uh, some of our COVID relief funds that we received, um, and we, uh, spent the last hundred thousand of that this year, um, so we no longer need that fund going into 2025. And then a couple others are just title changes, um, just to add a little clarification and, uh, make them reflect what we commonly refer to these funds as, um, so unless you have any questions, I'll keep that one short.
It's always good to make the auditors happy.
For sure.
I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-27, amending and restating section 1.20.010 of Wenatchee City Code relating to the funds of the city.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Huffaker and second by Councilmember Atkinson, for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-27, amending and restating section 1.20.010 of the Wenatchee City Code relating to the funds of the city. Any discussion or comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, oh, so now we go to the public hearing. My script's a little different, sorry. A little off track.
Yeah, no, I was, I know if you had a script-
Survey knows I'm leaving tonight, going to Auburn, gonna meet with Mayor Backus at, uh, 10 o'clock tonight, and then, uh, go on a little trip for two, for two days, so, a little distracted. All right, so now it's time for a public hearing, uh, the order, uh, for the purpose of ordinance number 2024-28, adopting the 2025 budget. Staff will first, uh, give their report, followed by public testimony, and we just ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and please, uh, have your comments addressed to the hearing body, should, uh, should be relevant to the public hearing and not be of personal nature. Uh, public testimony will be limited to three minutes. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is, uh, to adopt our 2025 budget. Uh, we have discussed this, um, in depth at, uh, last week's council meeting, and a month prior to that, we also discussed it. Um, nothing has changed since last week's council meeting, um, so I don't plan on going through the whole document again, um, and spending a bunch of time reviewing that. Um, I am happy to answer any questions that might have arisen since last week's meeting. Um, but otherwise, I mostly want to thank City Council, the mayor, uh, Laura, all the directors, uh, or finance staff. Um, there's a lot that goes into putting together the city's, the city's budget, and even just managing the day-to-day accounts to be able to roll up and track this. Um, there's, we have a 1,401 specific accounts that make up our budget. Um, those all roll up into 36 funds, and that rolls up into the Exhibit A that you're, uh, being asked to adopt tonight. Um, so otherwise, unless you've got any other questions, that's what I've got for you.
Um, any questions? I know we've gone through it quite a few times by the time it gets for adoption. Um, okay, I'll turn it over to public comment. Anybody? Chief?
I'll give myself. In the interest of expectancy for your travels.
All right. All right, we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for action.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-28, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
Second.
We have a, uh, motion by Councilmember Hornby, a second by Councilmember Euer, for City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-28, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025. I will say, I, I, again, I mentioned it before, but I know it's a lot of work, and it, uh, I, I, you know, I sat on City Council before, I know Councilmember Huffaker sat, you know, have done this, but it's way more than you realize, I think, uh, on a daily basis for a few months, and had, and going with the department, so thank you, um, seriously, for all the work you do on this. And you're incredible. I mean, it's, uh, our, uh, you really are. You, you, everybody looks at our budget, and I get from other boards I'm on, and they sit there and go, "Oh, my gosh, you guys got this figured out." So, when they say "you guys," they mean you and your staff.
Yes, my staff, for sure.
Anyway, that's the only comment. Any other comments or?
I, I just wanted to say, you know, I've said it at Finance Committee, and I just really appreciate that you do a really good job of being conservative with your numbers. You plan for the worst-case scenario and hope for the best, but you plan for the worst, and I really appreciate that about you, and everybody who goes into putting this budget together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
And, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, agreed. This was obviously my first time going through this, and I just really appreciate all the thought that you guys put into it, and the presentations at Finance Committee was extremely helpful, very well thought out, very well explained. Um, so thank you for all the effort and work that went into it. It's a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
And I would only add, you're, uh, very available for all my questions, so, thank you.
Anytime, you're welcome.
And the humor is appreciated.
Yes.
I probably should cut back a little bit, but-
No, please don't.
Well, I think we'll end with that. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Party hats?
Um, Mayor's Report. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hornby and Atkinson for going the breakfast appreciation. I know everybody has busy schedules. It was, uh, well-attended. I think it was, I was told, like, one of the, one of the most attended ones, so that was great. Everybody got the word out and, uh, got a lot of recognition. We have an, one employee, I think it's 40, 40 years, in the records department, and, uh, 44 years, yeah, it's incredible. And it was kinda fun, because the people that had it 30 years are saying, "Well, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get there, too." So, it just tells you we're doing a great job, uh, for a city, that people do wanna come here and work and wanna stay. And we had, and I get a little confused, but we have one of the lowest, uh, employment people leaving out of, I don't know if it's the whole state of Washington, but most of the, maybe you could just say that, just for a minute, for me, out of, say, I don't know if I'll say it correctly.
No problem. Uh, our turnover, uh, against the Bureau of Labor Statistics for our industry is, we are 12 to 15% below industry standards, so we're doing really well for the city of our size.
That's great.
Thank you. Um, reminder, uh, Holiday Open House Meet and Greet on December 5th, as well to thank those who serve on our boards and commissions, so it's gonna be a little, it's a, a little, I think that's a little bit different than we've done in the past, and so I'm kinda excited about that. And Tammy, we sent out all the committees, are we gonna go over that, though, tonight? Or?
I think it was just a reminder for the council to take a look at that, since we like to adopt it December 5th, um, and just let us know if there's any changes. If not, we'll continue to move forward as is.
Great. So, if you have any- Great, so if you have any, you send it back to Tammy, I guess, so. All right, what's, I know it's only been like a week, I think, so, any, any updates for our City Council?
Start at that end.
Not on my end.
I had a busy week. Uh, so I went to the Rivercom, sat in for the mayor, um, and we, uh, will probably get the view next year of, uh, the new inter-local agreement. We've changed it a little bit, it used to be a five-person voting board. Uh, we voted to, uh, make it a six-person voting board, so it'll be two commissioners, two, two city, and then one from fire and one from police. That, all of those will be elected officials, so if they vote on things, they have to be accountable to those that put them in office. So that'll be a change that we'll get to see, um, next year. Uh, the WDA is wrapping up their budget for twenty twenty-five, they've got a great list of events, uh, for the next year, um, pretty excited and re-energized down there with all the new businesses. Uh, they're looking for new board members, applications are open really soon, if you know anyone that's interested in becoming part of the board down there to open positions, and, um... He's pointing, anyway.
I'm pointing, I'm pointing, I'm getting volunteers.
Okay, perfect, love it. Um, and then at Pibus, just as a side note, we had, um, the Veterans Lunch down there, it was completely packed, it was a wonderful event. The Fire Department and the volunteers, they, they did a wonderful, wonderful event down there, and they plan on doing it again next year, so it was, it was really a good time.
Thank you for the update. Anybody else? I know it's only been a week, so.
Other than it was great to see you on the parade route. You forgot to mention that you were in the parade, that was really great.
I enjoyed it tremendously, yeah, that was fun.
Charlie, your graduation?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, uh, I did graduate along with Laura and Austin Sleva, so we completed the Citizens Academy, received our, uh, certificates from the chief, and, uh, that was a great, uh, great experience, so.
Oh, great.
And I will also go into the breakfast, was a lot of fun, seeing people shake your hand and go, I don't know who you are, it's wonderful.
To jump back at, uh, back with the academy, we have one police officer that did the, uh, the academy, so we know we're doing something good, two years ago, and, and now, uh, she's been a police officer for a couple years, maybe?
She's completed her first year, sir.
First year, okay.
First full year, it was.
And, and the reason she got involved was through the, the program you guys just, just did. I did tell, uh, our City Administrator that she would not be a very good police officer, she needs to see the persistence she is now. But what's cool about this, there's two young gentlemen, uh, both twenty-five years old, one grew up here in Wenatchee, one grew up in Leavenworth, and they're buddies. And they both are studying, uh, right now to see if they can be City Wenatchee Police Officers. And it's interesting, 'cause, uh, Captain Miller asked him to come talk, 'cause we had some questions. It's just really interesting to, to, to talk to these young, young men. And Captain Miller says, well, you know, you could look at Schland County and Douglas County also, and they go, no, we want the City of Wenatchee. So it tells you how, how impressed it is, uh, how important it is. Can you imagine if we get one, one recruit a year out of this by doing this? Besides all the other benefits for our community? I mean, and that's not, necessarily was the goal. The goal is just to let our community know that, uh, we're here and available. And I did say this last night, not, you know, how, 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 how much enjoyable can it be to be a police officer in the City of Wenatchee, when ninety percent of the people that live here are thankful? I mean, we gotta be one of the highest in the state that our officers are thanked, I, I believe daily, uh, uh, on it, so. It's impressive compared to other cities. Sorry, I wasn't gonna say that, but it, it, I'm very passionate about it, and I think it's a, a heck of a deal with the chief, and there's definitely a turnaround of our, there's definitely a positive movement with our, our city, and, and people want to work here and be police officers. He's got recruitments, uh, going on.
Any other announcements? Danielle's favorite?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker and second by Councilmember Hornby to close the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Thank you. I guess, uh, Happy Thanksgiving, right? If that comes up, we will see you guys.
Yeah, Happy Thanksgiving.